Okay, good. Good afternoon, and welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners work session for Wednesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Two oh one P M. My name is Time Entry Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Klaus. We have Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder and Jeremy Davis from Community Planning Economic Development Operations.
Joe Rettner.
Manager.
Manager. All right, so we have an agenda. Public can follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have two main substantive items. We're going to flip the order of those. Just for efficiency, we're going to start with item two, which is fair board apportionment changes and fairground fees. And that's Jeremy's item, so I'll just hand it to you, Jeremy.
If I could, Commissioner, prior to starting, just as a heads up to folks that may be following the county's livestream on YouTube, we have been having some issues with the cameras blacking out, but it has not affected the the sound or the recording. We will be recording this on Zoom as well, so if we run into that, we will sort of replace the video if need be later on. Appreciate everyone's patience.
All right, very good. And Jeremy, go ahead.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I'm here to speak to you today about the reapportionment of the Thurston County Fair Board, so we can accommodate our new five-member Board of County Commissioners. Currently, the Fair Board still has their old code in place. We're also here to talk to you about some specific fees that are in county code and how to restructure our code to allow for those fees to change on a more timely basis, more in keeping with cost increases and so on. And I also do want to say at the outset, we're not proposing to sunset the Fair Board or anything like that. We are proposing to keep all current Fair Board members. I just want to make sure that anybody who's listening does hear that from the outset. So currently, the Thurston County Fair Board has sixteen members in county code with two members from each Commissioner District. So if we go with the old Commissioner Districts of three, we had six who had to be residents of their of their Commissioner District and then ten at-large positions. The four Fair Board members serve varying terms depending on what position number they have. Most of them serve four-year terms, but there were some at-large positions that only had two-year terms, which could be confusing for some folks. And also for overall management of the Fair Board itself. In addition, each of the Fair Board terms according to county code were supposed to end in August and begin on September first of every calendar year. So that's one thing that, of course, we're hoping to address with the Board with this as we go through this reapportionment. So let's talk about what the proposed changes are just briefly. Again, we're going to maintain a sixteen-member Fair Board. We're not proposing to sunset and restart, reappoint it like we were before, what we did with the planning commission, I should say. We would continue to appoint two members from each Commissioner District and have, except we would switch the at-large positions from ten down to six, so we continue with sixteen and from each Commissioner District and six at-large. You do have a choice to change in that at your six in district positions. You could have both of them be in district, or you could have one in district and one at-large position as representative of each Commissioner District. So there's a choice point there for you to look at as we go through the process of amending our code for this. We would also standardize the Fair Board terms to four years, so we no longer have those oddball two-year terms on some of the positions. We would also allow for the appointment of ex officio members that would there be there to assist the Fair Board in their activities. These positions, of course, would be non-voting members. This will also help address one of the appointments that we made in September of a member who actually is not a resident of the county, but was appointed to the Fair Board by the Board of County Commissioners. So, and we actually have that noted in the table at the back end of that. We'll get to that. We would also reset all of the Fair Board member terms to conform to county code, so we would then have all the terms end in August and all of them begin in September, just like it's laid out in county code. All of the date changes for that are in the at the table at the very end, and we will go over that when we get to that. And then we'd also amend the county code to allow the county manager to set the fees for the fairground and event center based on costs, and we remove any specific fee references in county code. This again would allow for regular fee changes that we need to make at the fair and event center and also allow our new fair manager to have flexibility in setting what fees will be for any events that are going to be coming into the fairgrounds, because those aren't really in county code right now, so. If you want to go ahead and turn to the table at the very end, you'll see how we've moved people around. We do not have their old district position in here, but we do have their new ones and where we would place them. And Carrie Bodnar and I worked for quite a while actually looking at people's addresses, people's addresses to try and move them around to the district that they live in right now. And we're going to double-check that before we go to hearing, of course. So you'll see that for District One, we do have Kathy McQuaid and Paul Longwell there. For Paul Longwells, we would propose to extend his current term. He was appointed with a term ending on March thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. We would extend that out to August thirty-first of that year, which would then make his term consistent with the county code on that. For District Two, we would have Heidi Thompson and Kia Ramirez. And for District Three, we would have two vacancies right now. For District Four, we would have Larry Mahan and Lance McElroy. With Larry Mahan's position, we proposed to push his term ending date out to August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five, so it extends it out a little bit. His term currently is supposed to end on October eleventh of two thousand and twenty-four. Again, that's inconsistent with county code. For District number five, we would have Dawn Watson and then Teresa Reed, and with Teresa Reed's term, her term would actually be extended out to August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-seven. And then the other remaining members would be at-large positions, and you can see the ones in marked in red. Those terms that all get extended. I think there were a couple of terms we trimmed a little bit in there, too. So. But overall, this scheme that we have here will retain all current Fair Board members. They can continue to serve on the Fair Board and serve the county in their current capacity and reapportion them out, so.
What does the at-large mean if it's within the district, if we already have that large?
So with the at-large in district, you, as a board member, would be nominating that specific position to someone. Right, just like planning commission. The six at-large positions could come from any member.
Well, I got, we've never done that before, where we commissioner nominated the member. Okay, so that's a key change, but only first, ten out of the sixteen. I know, I'm hurting.
So again, this is just a draft one. It's my understanding that Heidi has already shared this with the Fair Board members, and she gave them some good opening statements on what this means and what it doesn't mean, and her big one, of course, is everybody's keeping their Fair Board position. Of course, again, that's up to the Board of County Commissioners, but that be our proposal. The Fair Board members have all worked very hard for the county fair, many of them for decades, so.
How did you go about figuring out who was going to be in the color versus in the white?
It was, we used addresses. Our our biggest goal at the outset was to make sure that we could maintain all our current Fair Board members on the Fair Board.
Yeah.
So we found people's addresses and looked them up for their new Commissioner District.
Somebody might be in district even though they're in a technically an at-large seat under one of the Commissioner Districts.
Right. They should all be in the district, and that's what I'm going to go back and double-check again, but yeah.
Right. Can you go over, I'm sorry, can you repeat this thing about the fees? I didn't quite catch.
Oh, sorry about that. I didn't actually over that. So what we have in county code right now, my apologies, sir.
Said something about it, but.
Yeah, so in two point five oh oh six oh, and this is on page five and six of the briefing, I do got page numbers in there.
Are you, are you talking about fees for booths or something?
Yeah, it's the booth fee.
Have it updated since ninety-eight or something?
Something like that. It was between ninety-eight and two thousand and thirteen. We haven't updated it, and the main reason for that, I think, is that we put the fee in county code. To update that, it requires the Board of County Commissioners to hold a public hearing. So the Fair Board actually proposed taking this fee out, and that's my understanding from Heidi at least, to allow us flexibility to update it as needed based on, of course, the cost of service out there. And I don't think they anticipate upping it all, but it does allow that flexibility. In addition to that, our code didn't really contemplate charging fees at the fairground very well for other events. And so the proposed change in here will enable the county manager to approve the fees the fair and event centers charging to outside events, too. So.
How does that work with the county manager getting dumped on a lot of stuff like this?
County manager or designee.
Yeah, or designee, yeah. Absolutely. I always put designee in there.
Enough, I thought maybe that'd be.
By Marshall. That's the director for.
Okay.
Yeah, ultimately, the proposed fees would originate with the fair manager and then go up through the CPED Director on up to the county manager if that was the route. So you'd have a bunch of staff checks in there. We would also have our Department Fiscal Manager working with the fair manager on what those fees are to make sure that we're not charging more than the actual cost of service, so.
But this, would you say that also this this change would offer the flexibility to the new fair manager, given that they have a a goal to achieve in that first eighteen months?
It absolutely would.
It could have been a hindrance to them.
It absolutely would. This provide, this will provide that fair manager the ability to work with our fiscal manager to charge the appropriate fees for the use of the fairgrounds to ensure that we're capturing our actual cost of service out at the fair and event center, so we're not going in a deficit when an event comes into town and uses the fair and event center.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, thank you. This is awesome. I do have a couple of questions, just because, I mean, I'm I'm new at kind of appointing people to some of our commissions and councils, and so I'm just wondering, like, what's the norm for commissioners as far as involvement in some of these committee things? Like, I observed a planning commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I learned a lot from it, and I tried to kind of not jump in because I was, you know, I'm just observing. Is it typical for commissioners to, like, attend some of these meetings occasionally just to see how they go?
For the Fair Board, we have an appointment, so on the appointment, the Fair Board Commissioner Edward served on that one before, so this one's a little bit different just because, kind of like LTAC, I feel like, right? It's got a commissioner appointment, so it really varies between committees. It really depends. I, I think.
I think I went about half the time.
Yeah, the advisory committees, like, for example, I attend those whenever I can, and I know commissioners in the past have attended those as well whenever they can. The agritourism one, it's the same, so it just varies as long as there's not a forum I'm looking at, Brandy, so she doesn't, and there doesn't have to be a special notice on that, so.
Okay, cool.
My first year, I tried to attend almost every one, at least once, just to see, you know, show my face and see what they do. Some of them that I had more interest in, like ag committee, I was going to like more more like every one, every out of every two or three for a while. I kind of trailed off on, to be honest, on some of them, because they knew who I am, and I felt like the relationship was established, but certain ones, if you're like, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's up to you. If you're really interested in a certain area, I think you have every right to attend.
Okay.
And then gauge your, like you said, I think it's it's prudent to gauge your, like, your level of, you know.
Yeah.
I try to stay a little bit more, let them do their work and.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, too. Because I don't, I'm, I was just like kind of reading through the names. I looked at this packet that, I don't, I don't know when we got this. I try to put a date on the top of everything, but I don't know if this is new, but it's showing that we had three Fair Board applications. And where do they fall on this? Is this down here?
At the very bottom, you'll see three three youth at-large vacancies.
Okay, and we would make those appointments like at our next regular meet work session next week, probably. Is that when we'll see this?
On the March fifth would be the earliest we would do that.
Okay, okay, cool. I was reading through the applications, and I just thought that some of the youth had really cool backgrounds. So I was curious about kind of how that works and like if we ever get to observe those meetings and see the youth involvement, because I just thought it was really cool, like, why they want to get involved in all of the things that they've done. It's not really my area, so I've just been having fun learning a lot about it.
The Vice President, Yara Ramirez, was a youth member who then became an adult and is now.
Oh, that's cool.
One of the leaders of the committee.
Teresa Reed was also involved at the fair as a child, so.
Yeah, that's really.
She's trying to catch up with Anne Rettner.
Yeah, there you go. That should, yeah.
Can I throw out a devil's advocate kind of question for the board to ponder? And that is, is really, I I get there's certain boards and commissions where it makes sense, especially Planning Commission, where there are district-specific positions, but wondering sometimes, does it always bear fruit or is it necessary with all groups? And the Fair Board, for me, it's it's always been about who has an interest and a passion for the fair and making it as successful as regardless of where they live. And should there be districts seats, or should they all be at-large, just all regular Fair Board members, and then they figure out who serves what officer role, and then we.
If I had to guess, I'd say the reason was from years ago are is rural America being represented or, you know, because oftentimes all of our county commissioners would be from municipal areas. And maybe that's where their friends and associates were. I really don't know, but I can guess that as an issue, I don't think, and I think that's why the division between two per commissioner and then the rest at-large, and it could just as well be maybe be one or something, but I think it does give a certain flavor to the district, I guess is the best way of.
Well, and with one, I mean, and I agree with you. I don't really, I'm sort of surprised that we had this, but with one of the two being at-large, you know what I mean, like, we're really, we're really only saying that one person from each Commissioner District out of sixteen, only saying five out of sixteen have to be rooted in a district. So it it's really a question of whether we want to have the ten seats that commissioners themselves nominate. And I would say I'm fine with that. I mean, I would definitely not want all of them that way. I like that we've got at least, you know, almost half of it at-large. But I don't have any problem with this. I mean, it gets each commissioner kind of thinking about it and talking about it and, you know, getting folks in their areas of the county involved, so I think it's good.
And that, this is how this table is set. Of course, there was the option of requiring both to be residents of the district, but if you'd rather have the flexibility to have one in district and one at-large from each one, that works really well.
I think that's useful just for what Rob said. I mean, I, I don't know, my district might be the farthest away from the fairgrounds. I mean, I don't know. It's like, not that there are people that go to the fair, but I mean, it's, I think the flexibility is good. Looks good, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you.
So next steps?
Next step.
So next steps, what I'd like to do is see if we can talk to the Fair Board about it before we bring it to you for public hearing. Then we come to you and set the public hearing, hold the public hearing, and then you'd have a chance to make a final decision on the code changes. Next up after this one, of course, we'll be bringing you Historic Commission, which we already received direction to make them all at-large, which is actually really well for that one, so. Right? All right. Yeah. That's right, and we were meeting on a Thursday, that one. They they moved it because of Valentine's Day, so. Yeah, it was actually a big fun meeting, so.
So when is the next Fair Board meeting?
I'll check with Heidi on that. Is it March?
It's, yeah. Only reason is because I asked yesterday. I was like, when's the next one?
I have a question.
What?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So with the Historic Commission, how many members are there?
There are twelve members.
Twelve members, and are there any requirements?
There are, well, currently in code, there are some in district requirements. At the direction we received, really, of course, is to make them all at-large. There are some specific requirements in the code itself in order for the county to meet the certified local government requirements. And that's, those are, you're looking at certain professions to be representative on the Historic Commission, such as archaeology, someone who's in building preservation or like an architect. We also have a lawyer as a representative right now, that Charles Rowan, he's been on there for a very long time, and there's some other specific professions that it calls for having on the Historic Commission, one or more of them, I should say.
Okay, so twelve members at-large, specific professions, is there any, does anything speak to like tribal representation requirements?
None of the positions do currently, but that could also be an option of the board at a time of appointment. And I think the Historic Mission was actually talking about it their last meeting. They're currently going through their entire code and discussing certain changes to it, and one of them was the membership change, so.
Okay, thank you.
March sixth.
March sixth, okay. So we'll we'll know sort of what their feedback is fairly quickly and then potentially be able to put in an E I S to request a public hearing.
Absolutely. All right. Hey, thank you. Have a great afternoon.
You too.
And may the power stay on. Better right now than he was.
Is he doing Zooms?
Yes, for, well, it's very long time, especially.
Do you stop?
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, I go to.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, five-minute break.
Five-minute break, sorry.
Sorry about that.
If you think.
And then they went away, so we need to.
Also, on the attendee list is Jeff Gadman, and is he going to be here? Do we know?
He saw that right now.
Because he's a member of the Funding Governance Work Group, so he should be here if he can be.
We'll reach out.
Send him a message and see if he can come in.
Please.
Yeah. Oh, Rob. But I don't know if they want to share from their computers. I have it here in the boardroom.
Sure, can you guys hear us, Tessa and Anne? Yep, Tess is nodding, thumbs up.
Would you like to run your slideshow from your computer?
We can do that, certainly.
Okay, because I know you you'd sent it, but it might be easier for you to advance when you are ready.
Sounds good.
We have the hard copies as well, so.
Oh, good.
All right, do it.
We have just a couple other folks joining us. I can put out a call for them to be ready, if you guys are ready to rock and roll.
Okay, hold on. Yep, we're ready.
Okay, let me send an email in one second. Volunteer to see which one of us is appointed.
Because the executive committee, it doesn't, it used to meet more frequently, now it's meeting less.
Hey, do you know if it's either me or Ty that's appointed to the the Capitol District Sustuary? Okay, can you just text me? Thank you. I volunteer you.
I'm gonna.
You gave it to yourself.
Oh, okay.
Her feast.
I was like, I don't mind that.
About one of them. Yes, those two.
And these two?
Oh, no, you don't need to sign those. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Waiting for them to join.
Ah, me. So you can volunteer for a lot.
I can, at least, at least I can say that. We we're trying to jive. I was like, everybody, like, we have TRPC sought, but Danny's already there. We've got a sea-level-ry spot, but I'm already there. Hey, see Dave and Sarah connecting. Are those the two we needed?
And Anne, what do you say? We could probably get started with Dave and Anne or and Sarah now being on?
Yeah, I think that's probably just fine, because I think our first bit is to provide some introduction for folks that don't know us. So would you like us to go ahead and get started?
Give me, we'll do a countdown, and I'll kind of reintroduce that we're back on the record, and then I'll turn it straight to you, Anne.
Okay.
Okay, in three, two, one.
Okay, it's two twenty-eight P M. We're back from a short recess for the Board of County Commissioners work session for Wednesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-four. And we're flipping back to item one on this afternoon's agenda, which is the Capitol Lake Chief Vestuary Funding and Governmental Work Group informational session. We have folks from various places that I'll let them introduce themselves. I'll give it to you, Anne, to kind of lead that introduction piece.
Wonderful, thank you, and good afternoon, Commission. My name is Anne Larson, and I'm the Project Director for the District Sustuary Restoration. I've been working on this project with the Department of Enterprise Services for the state of Washington for the past seven years. And with me, I have an incredible team, which I will have them introduce themselves. So Tessa, why don't you go ahead?
Thanks, Anne. We're so excited to be here today. Thank you for the time. My name is Tessa Gardner-Brown. I'm a principal at Floyd Snyder. I have been working very closely with Anne and the Department of Enterprise Services for the last seven years as the project manager through the E I S and the project manager now in this phase with design and permitting. I work very closely with the other folks on the call, and I'll pass it to Sarah next.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sarah Rich with Echo Northwest, and I've been involved in this project, starting in the E I S phase with the, doing the economic analysis and supporting the Funding and Governance Work Group, and now I'm continuing in that capacity, and also I'm serving as the lead for the funding strategy with with Anne and Tessa. And I can pass it over to Dave.
Thank you, Sarah, and thanks, everybody, for allowing us to join you. David Merchant, I am an Assistant Attorney General representing D E S and supporting the entire project. I'm not quite sure who to turn it over to next. Aaron?
Aaron.
Hi, I'm Erin Murray. I'm working, I work for Floyd Snyder. I've been here for twenty years, and I am new to this project. I worked on the E I S a bit and and I'm new to this portion of the project.
And I see our last team member just joined us, Lorelei. We're just doing quick introductions. If you can hear me, pop on and tell us who you are.
Timely. Hi, everybody. I'm Lorelei Johnson with Echo Northwest. Thanks for having us all here today.
Thank you. Maybe we can go around. I'll start with Commissioner Vice Chair Fournier on the screen, then we'll go into the room.
Hi, I'm Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier for the fourth district.
I'm Time Enter, Chair of the Board, Commissioner for third district.
Carolina Mejia, Commissioner for District One.
Gary Edwards, Commissioner District Two.
Emily Klaus, Commissioner for District Five.
And Rob Gelder, Assistant County Manager.
And we think that this slide is beneficial, even though the project has been part of the county dialogue for really many decades. There are a number of different configurations of an estuary restoration. And so we think it's beneficial if we describe what the Enterprise Services has elected to move forward with. So on the left side of the screen, you'll see a project overview graphic and I'll walk you through that first and then we'll go over into the primary benefits. So at the end of um 2022, that was the conclusion of the environmental impact statement process. And that process concluded with the decision um to move forward with estuary restoration for the management of the water body that's at the foot of the Capitol campus. And to make that decision, Enterprise Services looked at all of the technicals um science in the environmental impact statement and also looked at and incorporated feedback from the range of stakeholders, including Thurston County, in the decision-making process so that uh the decision to move forward in any way, which ultimately was selected to be the estuary, best balanced the technical science with stakeholder input. And both technical and stakeholder input pointed to estuary restoration. So the restored estuary would um during construction, we would start by dredging about 500,000 cubic yards of sediment from, to restore the main channel of the um historic Dushuts River. And so I'm dragging my mouse sort of along that area. With that 500,000 cubic yards of sediment, rather than taking it off-site, what we'll do with it is um beneficially reuse it along the shorelines of the project area to create new habitat islands. And the purpose, the purpose of that is twofold. One is it creates a ecologically and visually diverse shoreline environment rather than just having mud flats in a restored um estuary. But two, it also significantly reduces the cost of construct, construction because you're not sending that 500,000 cubic yards offsite to a landfill. So there's a lot of benefits with that work. Um, we also get 85 acres of new salt marsh habitat when we do that, which is per, habitat that's preferred for fish. And it looks really quite beautiful as well. Um, in addition to uh the construction that we'll do on the habitat side, we will also be restoring uh recreation throughout the water body. As you all may know, there has been closed. Uh, there has been no active use of this expansive water body since 2009 because of the um presence of the New Zealand mud snail. This project, and once it's implemented, will restore the ability for people to use this resource uh across the county and across the state, which is so great. And that restored use will be supported by a mile of new boardwalks being constructed along the uh western side of what we call the Middle Basin and the South Basin. Replacement of an old fishing pier so we can get uh salmon fishing back into the estuary and then construction of a hand-carried boat launch so people can use kayaks and stand-up paddle boards and, and whatnot on the estuary. And then the very last piece of construction um is removal of the dam. But before dam removal, what we have to do is construct a new bridge and we will construct a new Fifth Avenue Bridge just south of the existing dam. And that'll include a vehicle lane in both, in both directions and also separated bike and ped lane. So there's going to be a big improvement there for bike and ped uh circulation across the corridor. Once that's constructed, the Fifth Avenue Dam can be removed and we can reintroduce tidal flow into the project area. And importantly, after construction, and that's going to be the focus of this conversation, is what we do after construction. There will be maintenance dredging in West Bay to address the sediment that will accumulate downstream that'll no longer be held back by a dam, so it has the ability to move into those navigational areas. And the project proposes to dredge that so that navigation can continue after estuary construction so the built-in nat- natural environments can really coexist. Let me pause on that to see if there are any questions about what is the estuary? What does it include and not include?
How, how are we going to ask questions so we don't step on somebody else? Just go ahead, check with you or if you're looking down the table or something.
Yeah.
What, what's going to go on with uh the salmon? When they, once the bridge, the gate is gone or whatever, and now it's utilized. So then, did I hear you say something about salmon fishing?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's such a good question. So how are salmon going to use the resource? Let me start by how they currently use it and then I'll get to how they will use it in the future. Right now, they get through, they get to this area by going through a nine-foot fish ladder. And at the bottom of that fish ladder, marine mammals just sit there and eat them. So it's really like a buffet line. And in, when the dam is removed, we will have a span of about 500 feet through this area and about 750 feet on the bridge span. And that'll allow salmon to move freely into the project area and really to use that, this now 260 acres of restored estuary. So we expect the sam- the salmon to return to this area and therefore salmon fishing, like used to happen historically, would be a reasonable, a reintroduction for recreation. And so we'll construct a fishing pier right here at the south end of the Middle Basin so that community members can fish right into the restored um Dushuts River.
And then as a follow-up to that, so where do those uh sea lions end up?
Going?
Hungry dating, I guess, once the dam is gone. Where, where's the next stop they're going to corner the fish at?
They, they will no longer have a buffet line. And so they may still hang out, but they won't be as incentivized to hang out in this narrow nine-foot corridor because like I said, this will be opened up to a 500 foot, so fish won't be shooting up the ladder. And then here, all of these other openings, there's a bridge right here and there's I-5 right here. They're much more expansive. So there isn't a compression point that you currently see like today in the future.
So where they go up by the fish hatchery by the falls now, is that going to be the new lockage? Or uh condensing salmon? I'm just, i- is that where there's going to be a new uh?
Compression point?
Problem, I guess, for the?
Buffet line? We may, we may see uh marine mammals move further up the estuary. Certainly, that's two additional miles that they would travel up to Tom Waterfalls to get up um to that fish ladder. I um, we're not speculating necessarily on whether they will do that. My feeling is they might prefer the deeper waters in uh West Bay, but I, I will withhold on further judgment there.
I, I guess, is there a plan to address that? I, I'm, uh, it looks great, but I see a problem down there now. And am I going to see a problem up, two miles up? When this project is over without a plan maybe to address it?
Yeah, it's a really great question. And WDFW, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, they have been doing and leading the thinking on how to reduce that pressure from marine mammals. And so my understanding is they're thinking about how to uh deal with that under existing conditions. And we're engaged with them right now in this estuary planning. And we can bring forward your, your question about what sort of active management will be needed at the base of the falls. So I'm glad you brought that up.
And then sometime back, there was speculation that the Corps of Engineers wasn't going to want to do something. But did that all get fixed? So everybody's on the same page?
Great question. So um for the broader group, let me add just a little bit more context about that. Uh, back in the early 90s or maybe it was the late 90s, but uh quite a few decades ago, the project was considered as part of uh Pizner Puget Sound Nearshore uh Estuary Program, or I think that's right. And um the Corps took a close look at it and deter, and wanted and was thoughtful about if the dam is removed, that would change the current sediment dynamics in the navigational channel, which happens right about here. And the Corps cares about that because they have jurisdiction over maintaining navigational depths in the navigational channel. At that time, they raised that as a potential conflict. And so when we were in the environmental impact statement process, we re-initiated consultation with the Corps to help them understand uh how sediment deposition would change. And what we were able to demonstrate is that while the dam would be removed and it would change conditions compared to, it would change sediment deposition compared to existing conditions, the deposition would be consistent with what occurred when the navigational channel was first established and was dredged historically. So for all of the years it was established before the, the dam was put in, the Corps had that responsibility and would have a similar responsibility when it was taken out. So we started that coordination during the EIS. They uh understood that and, and reviewed the project for regulatory feasibility and we were able to move it forward. And then our plan is to reengage with the Corps beginning this year.
I see Wayne's got his hand up.
Yep, I was waiting for you, sir.
Oh, well, I don't want to.
Yeah, I, I, I think my question, or I was, it's along the lines with, with what Commissioner Edwards was asking about was just like, what is it? Can you, can you comment more on the sediment management post-dam removal? Like, wh- what are the assurances that that would continue? What would that look like?
That is exactly what we're here to brief you on today. And so yes, we will comment on that. We'll go through a bunch of slides and hopefully we'll we'll get through all of that in painstaking detail. You'll be totally up to speed.
Could I ask one more question then? On, as this project moves forward, have you folks done all of the water testing? Uh, so that we'll have a baseline to see if anything's changed. I mean, specifically, one of my concerns is that under the current uh forest practices, there's a lot of uh nitrogen, I think it's called urea 46, that's put on our forest lands with helicopters. And I, I've watched this over the years, been going on for 50 years or so. And so my concern has been that we didn't do an analysis of the upper Dushuts. Uh, this board did send a letter in requesting that, but we didn't get it. And so we still don't know if there's going to be any kind of a nitrogen impact that's going to, maybe it'll be more nitrogen because the swamp won't take it out, or maybe there'll be less nitrogen because the swamp will take it out. I don't know, but lot gets stuck with the problem and ecology gets after lot about you got to take more nitrogen out. And uh, I'm, I'm trying to think ahead a little bit. Are we going to have some kind of a comparison that we can see if we've been successful? But to really have that adequate comparison, we have to do adequate testing beforehand. And it didn't seem like anybody was interested in doing that. And I would encourage any of you, if you're interested in what I'm talking about, about helicopter application. It's, it's corporate application of fertilizer. Uh, and it's done not just here, it's done all through the Cascade Range and I suspect, I suspect other places as well. But there doesn't seem to be much regulatory oversight uh because of the corporate connection. It's big money. Nobody wants to challenge big money, maybe, I don't know. But are we going to have something in place so that at least we can have a comparison? It's better, it's worse, you know, another 20 years down the road or whatever.
I want to throw out before you guys answer that, that we, based on Commissioner Edwards' concerns, in 2019 and 20, we did a series about a year's worth of water quality testing up and down the Dushuts. Cause I wanted to be, I'm certainly willing to take on the big guy if, if what he was saying was, was validated by our county's data and there wasn't any um indication that what was happening in Capitol Lake was coming from way upriver. Although I know Commissioner Edwards didn't necessarily agree with the results of that testing, but I just want to throw that out there because we tried to get that answer. And if I'd seen those numbers, I would have been with him 100% locked arms to go after Warehouser and their practices for um chemical application in forest land.
Yeah, and, and, but let me just point out, one of the reasons I think that it was not a valid uh review by our own staff was because it did not coincide with chemical application time periods. And so just arbitrarily testing water without knowing the schedule from the timber industry, which they're a little bit hesitant to give that out. Uh, so we didn't really come up with any good information.
But, this is a debate from four years ago, but the, the, what we're trying to figure out is what's causing the water quality issues at a constant level in Capitol Lake. And so there really should have been, you know, some detection of that issue at some level, maybe not the maximum level after an application, but if it's causing all the problems we're seeing in Capitol Lake or a lot of the problems we're seeing in Capitol Lake, I would have expected, and I'm not an expert necessarily, but anyway, that was just something that we hashed around as, as a board back in 2019, 20.
But the bottom line is we never did get a real good answer.
Yeah, I mean, certainly Commissioner Edwards' request for like that upstream um analysis was not. And the board did send a letter and it didn't. Commissioner Fornier, do you still have your hand up from before? You have something else?
Uh, sorry, no, but I really enjoyed that exchange between you two.
A historical, uh, I think a great counting of a debate we had.
Could I ask a question in terms of the, the illustration that's on the screen? And that, the, the larger illustration shows the estuary alternative at mean tide. Do you have modeling at higher tides or king tides?
Yes, absolutely. We did an extensive hydrodynamic and sediment transport numerical modeling effort, which is basically a long way of saying we looked at uh water level elevations in a range of different scenarios to understand how that would change as a result of the estuary. And one of the most positive things that we found, which is on the other side of this screen here, is that restoring the estuary can reduce flooding elevations by up to a foot across the city of Olympia. So there's a huge benefit, not only for recreation and habitat, but also for climate resiliency across the city.
Thank you.
Let's get into some of those benefits and um, and then we'll, yeah, let's, let's go there. So I've covered many of them, but when we think about this project, we really are able to see a multi-benefit project coming together and what
I wanna throw out before you guys answer that, that we, based on Commissioner Edwards' concerns, in twenty nineteen and twenty, we did a series about a year's worth of water quality testing up and down the deschutes. Cause I wanted to be, I'm certainly willing to take on the big guy if, if what he was saying was, was validated by our county's data. And there wasn't any um indication that what was happening in Capital Lake was coming from way upriver. Although I know Commissioner Edwards didn't necessarily agree with the results of that testing, but I just wanna throw that out there because we tried to get that answer. And if I'd seen those numbers, I would have been with him hundred percent locked arms to go after Warehouser and their practices for um chemical application in forest land.
Yeah, and, and, but let me just point out, one of the reasons I think that it was not a valid uh review by our own staff was because it did not coincide with chemical application time periods. And so just arbitrarily testing water without knowing the schedule from the timber industry, which they're a little bit hesitant to give that out. Uh so we didn't really come up with any good information.
But, okay, from four years ago, but the, the, what we're trying to figure out is what's causing the water quality issues at a constant level in Capital Lake. And so there really should have been, you know, some detection of that issue at some level, maybe not the maximum level after an application. But if it's causing all the problems we're seeing in Capital Lake, or a lot of the problems we're seeing in Capital Lake, I would have expected, and I'm not an expert necessarily, but anyway, that was just something that we hashed around as, as a board back in twenty nineteen, twenty.
But the bottom line is, we never did get a real good answer.
Yeah, I mean, certainly Commissioner Edwards' request for like that upstream um analysis was not. And the board did send a letter and it didn't. Commissioner Fornier, do you still have your hand up from before? You have something else?
Uh sorry, no, but I really enjoyed that exchange between you two.
Good historical uh, I think a counting of a debate we had.
Could I ask a question in terms of the, the illustration that's on the screen? And that the, the larger illustration shows the estuary alternative at mean tide. Do you have modeling at higher tides or king tides?
Yes, absolutely. We did an extensive hydrodynamic and sediment transport numerical modeling effort, which is basically a long way of saying we looked at uh water level elevations in a range of different scenarios to understand how that would change as a result of the estuary. And one of the most positive things that we found, which is on the other side of this screen here, is that restoring the estuary can reduce flooding elevations by up to a foot across the city of Olympia. So there's a huge benefit, not only for recreation and habitat, but also for climate resiliency across the city.
Thank you.
Let's get into some of those benefits and um, and then we'll, yeah, let's, let's go there. So I've covered many of them, but when we think about this project, we really are able to see a multi-benefit project coming together. And what we have, um, what we have learned over the years is that uh really every kind of sort of piece, that there are just so many opportunities to see, to realize benefits from the natural and the built environment. So these first couple of slides talk about the significant improvement that the project will make to salmon habitat and also to um habitat for other important species to the Puget Sound and the work that we'll be doing to construct habitat that best supports those target species. I just described that removing the dam will reduce maximum flooding elevations across the city of Olympia. Um Commissioner Edwards, to your point, the project will also address chronic, chronic water quality violations by improving dissolved oxygen conditions in Bud Inlet. What happens right now is all the nutrients flush into the lake, it creates a bunch of um aquatic growth, aquatic plant growth. Those plants flourish in the summer. At the end of the summer, they die off. They, the, they move into Bud Inlet. When they decompose, they use up all the oxygen and essentially it sucks up all the oxygen, which is really important for aquatic life. Um when that dam is removed, there will be tidal exchange and that plant growth that we see today won't be happening in the same way. And that's why the lot, the, who, I'm gonna switch over to this bottom slide here. They will have a reduced regulatory burden because uh a lot ecology will not be coming down on Lot, as was mentioned in a, in a comment just a second ago. They cut in the same way as if the dam was removed because ecology is trying to balance that um nutrient input, which depletes dissolved oxygen. So taking the estuary out is the single biggest thing we can do to improve dissolved oxygen in, in West Bay.
Can I ask you that right there? Cause trying to connect the dots for Commissioner Edwards' point. Um if it were true that lots of nitrogen or other things, undesirable elements were coming down the river from somewhere above, what I think I heard you say is that by not having the lake kinda holding them in one place, like even if that were true, the removal of the dam should improve water quality conditions considerably because the fact that they're being held in the lake and then fostering the plant growth is really driving the dissolved oxygen issue.
You got it. You got it exactly right. Okay, and then um I'm just gonna head up on this column here. So I described that the project also constructs that new Fifth Avenue Bridge. We have to do that in order to remove the dam and that's a significant improvement to the transportation system in Olympia. Um, the project also has the opportunity to reduce by the order of millions of dollars uh cleanup costs that the Port of Olympia are currently looking at right now to address sediment contamination in West Bay. And the way that could potentially play out is once the dam is removed, our sediment, which we have sampled and know is clean, could be used to cover areas of um uh of lower levels of contamination in West Bay. So those areas don't have to be dredged. And if we can get dredging some areas um out of the dredging scheme, that, that is a cost benefit for the Port of Olympia. And then the last thing is that this pro- this project makes significant progress toward restoring a landscape that is very important to the Squawson Island Tribe. Okay, I'll be brief on this slide so we can get into the meat of the MOU. So um this slide is our current understanding of how we will progress the design and permitting effort. And what you see is that in twenty twenty-four, we are generally splitting the year in half. Everything between now and mid twenty twenty-four will be focused on developing conceptual design. And midway through that conceptual design process, we will meet with targeted stakeholders to solicit their input on key design elements. For example, we'll meet with the Squawson Island Tribe and the Department of Fish and Wildlife to discuss restoration design. The city of Olympia will meet with them about the bridge um and bridge aesthetics. And that meeting with them early in the design process helps to incorporate their feedback into the restoration design. After mid twenty twenty-four, we'll um be moving forward with thirty percent design. And just as you saw here, we'll be meeting about halfway through with those stakeholders to solicit their input on specific elements of the project design. And then by the end of twenty twenty-six, if we continue to receive funding, we should be complete with project design and permitting. And it's very important to note this box that we have here on the screen, which is um circling or um enclosing everything after mid twenty twenty-four, that additional funding is needed to proceed with design and permitting after, after that time. So Anne and Sarah and the team are working together to pursue a variety of different funding sources from state and federal funding and also from the grant funding and also from the legislature. We're working actively on that.
Could I ask a question about that?
Please.
Uh beans, you're focusing a little bit on those dollar signs. That's the part that always makes me nervous. So uh in watching out for the local taxpayers, I guess uh, I, I just, for simplicity, I wanna just throw something out here. It's not necessarily relevant, but uh relevant, but you'll see what I'm referring to, I think. So when the United States government decided during World War Two, they needed to make an atomic bomb, they went over to Eastern Washington and did their thing. And then sometime after that, they decided, well, we gotta clean this mess up that we've made. So they didn't go to Benton County and say, hey Benton County, we want you to kick in half or whatever it might have been. They took that responsibility on because they actually caused the problem. So for the citizens of Thurston County, this whole thing was put in place, I don't know, nineteen fifty, let's say, I don't have the date.
Yeah, you got it.
And uh it was actually done by the state more than anything else for the aesthetics of the Capitol reflecting or whatever, whatever the reason was. And so my concern is that the state should actually be, all the taxpayers in the state of Washington should be contributing to this solution, to this problem. And I, yet I see in reading your material that some of that is gonna be taken up by the taxpayers of Thurston County, unless there's a funding source that I'm missing. Uh.
We can explain that.
Make sure that the citizens of Thurston County aren't stuck paying a bill for all of the citizens in the state of Washington. Because, you know, ten cents on a thousand for each one of our folks instead of uh maybe one tenth of one cent for everybody in the state to kick in, so.
So Commissioner, uh, on behalf of the state, um, you know, we, we did look at that through um earlier processes and we're gonna get more into that here in another few slides to really dive into the, the, the costs. But the state has recognized that we put in the dam and the state is committed to remove the dam. So uh I just want to assure you that the state is committed to the project construction costs, which we'll talk a little bit more in just a few slides.
Okay, I guess, and that's where, I mean, looking through your material, I saw there was, you know, Thurston County was putting in almost three million dollars in several locations. We just don't have budget.
Yeah, if you look at their, well, they'll get to that. Okay.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll talk a little bit. We're actually almost there, so hold that thought.
Any questions about the schedule before we get given to the MOU? Okay, Sarah, I'm remembering from, I'm gonna pass it to Sarah and Sarah, and I'm just remembering from the um one of our last presentations that it could be helpful to go through the participants of the Funding and Governance Work Group and the focus of the MOU. First, before we.
Yeah, where this came from, abs, the directive, is that, yeah.
Yeah.
So the Funding and Governance Work Group um be uh really started as, um, out of a legislative proviso. The legislature um directed as part of the, the EIS analyses um to determine or to figure out a funding and governance solution for this. And so it was um the Funding and Governance Work Group was a response to that call from the legislature to uh not leave that question for the end, to directly address it from the beginning and through the process. And so Funding and Governance Work Group started meeting in twenty eighteen. Um, and uh that, those meetings um proceeded along, as the EIS process went through. And so um the group really was uh able to begin wrestling with the big questions of funding and governance and what this would be um starting early and um, and followed through the process as it evolved and through alternative, alternative evaluation. And um I just wanna bring back and emphasize what Anne said about um the state ultimately did agree to take on the costs of, of um construction because it was um rectifying the original um construction of the dam that caused all of these problems. That was a direct outgrowth of the deliberation and discussion within the Funding and Governance Work Group about how we allocate cross costs across the different entities. And again, the Funding and Governance Work Group just uh is made up of um the state uh it call uh DNR and DES. Each have representatives on the, the group, the tribe, the Squawson Island Tribe, uh Thurston County, Tom Water, Olympia and Lot and the Port of Olympia, uh Port of Olympia. Did I miss anyone? And so um, you know, tho- those entities around the table represented, each, each came to the table representing their own constituents and interests in that and um created a lot of opportunity for rich discussion about the costs of the project and how those would be distributed and the benefits of moving from no action to some action. And so before the um Enterprise Services made a decision that the estuary would be the alternative that moves forward, it was really thinking about, you know, the potential benefits of any action ultimately. Um, or a, and at that midpoint, the um, the draft environmental impact statement had that determination that the state would take the, the costs. And then long-term operation and maintenance costs would be the subject of further discussion specific to um a preferred alternative. And that's where we went into what I'll, I'll walk through here next. Um but I hope that background kind of helps to um answer the early roots, you know, answer your question, any questions you have about the early roots of this process and um and how we got to the um, what's in the MOU as far as the, the long-term after construction costs that were distributed across the group.
Thank you.
Just a minute. Yeah. So with that, this slide here lays the foundation of how the group ended up thinking about the distribution of those long-term costs among um, among, among its membership. And they, there wa- there is a recognition, there's a um kind of foundational recognition that the, the locals would benefit from um proceeding with estuary restoration. And, and it, it happens in, and in, in that therefore justifies a connection between contributing um contributing through the uh, the funding arrangement that we'll talk about in more detail later. And that happens in a couple of different ways. Um, these shared benefits that you'll see here on the slide really are shared across the local jurisdictions. We did a um qualitative analysis to identify those different pathways of benefit. And from an economic perspective, they occur both um in monetary terms and in non-monetary terms, meaning some um, some of the, the action of restoring the estuary has the potential to produce um stream uh to, to maintain existing streams of revenue uh and potentially produce new ones through taxes. And um there are a tremendous amount of um, there's a tremendous, tremendous amount of value created through um implementing this project for the, the people who live in the area um for both direct experience with the resource and through quality of life. So when we talk about protected benefits, when we talk about um the sediment management components of that, that allows um the working waterfront and recreational, recreational boating in West Bay to continue as it is currently enjoyed um by the, the local marinas, the public resources in the dock, in the form of the docks there and the port activity. So that implementation of the long-term management plan as described in the MOU um ensures that the revenues that are enjoyed through DNR leases, through the taxes, through, from that business activity um and from the just enjoyment of those opportunities will continue. So it protects those benefits that are currently being enjoyed. The um, the long-term, the, the MOU and the Agreement for Long-Term Funding and Governance, again, that answer to the legislative call for a solution to, how do we fund this thing? Um, it really, that, that signals and unlocks the, the potential for the project to actually be implemented, to move through construction and into operation. And by implementing the estuary restoration, we unlock a whole host of other benefits that Tessa has already gone through um on the previous slide. Uh and those range from improvements in ecosystem goods and services, the water quality, the benefits to Lot from um changes in uh water quality that are specifically regulated. And then the public amenities and transportation benefits. Um, and the way, the importantly, that people will be able to access this water because that is currently not, not um the case under the current situation. So um, a variety of benefits there that each jurisdiction recognized. And as part of that conversation, um I also recognized that while those benefits are widespread and um people throughout the region enjoy them, the city of Olympia in its position directly adjacent to West Bay um and host, you know, hosting being tho- those businesses within the city of Olympia um that they have the greatest potential benefit uh from an economic and social perspective. The, their connection to that waterfront is stronger than some of the other entities around the table. And so as we walk through how the allocation ultimately um was agreed upon, that's the rationale. And Tessa will go through that again when we get to those numbers specifically. Okay, let's move on to the next slide. So there's two pieces to the, the charge from the legislature. There was the funding piece, how do we fund this project and the long-term operation? And then how do we govern it? And as we wrestled with the governance question, there were um a variety of potential options on the table. And as the group deliberated around creating a new entity to do this thing, a new layer of bureaucracy, um really uh the, the gravity wars towards how do we pro- produce the simplest solution possible to get to um a long-term sustainable um uh project in the area. And uh the, the group did this by recognizing that while the project would produce constructed assets um and a, a new environment, that those constructed assets ultimately should become part of the, the fabric, uh management fabric of the jurisdictions. And um so they should be and would most efficiently be operated by um the entities that um that are most closely related to them. So for instance, the city of Olympia would take ownership of the bridge. Once it's constructed, the state would transfer ownership. Uh the city of Tom Otter similarly would accept responsibility for new boardwalks in the south basin adjacent to their existing parks. And um the state of Washington agencies would take on the, the boardwalks and infrastructure really uh most closely related to the, their park system. Um so the boardwalks there, uh the decontamination stations would be operated by DFW. And so that's the constructed assets. Um and then there's some management responsibilities that long-term that come with this. Um but that again are more, most appropriately housed within the expertise of the agencies or organizations around the table jurisdictions that um that do those things best. So uh the port of, so um the regula- regulation of boating and fishing and recreation in the estuary would stay with the state because they already do that. Um, that really left um, well, and then the, the, the tribe would e- expressed interest in participating in the implementation of um habitat management. Um, so that really left the question of sediment management. And um this is an ongoing activity, as you'll see later, um it's cyclical. And so it isn't happening every day or every year even. And so that piece of it is something that needs to be managed. Um and then the funding piece of fiduciary responsibility of collecting the money and, and holding it until those contracts need to be managed also um is a responsibility, but those don't require additional layer of, of government. So that's where we landed on this inter-local agreement um as the governing sort of um or is providing the, the rules for how the entities around the table would choose to manage this um collectively. And those responsibilities would be taken on by the state of Washington for dredge management. Um because again, they do that kind of thing, DNR um is, manages contracts uh and would take on the design permitting and contract management for that cyclical dredge. The Port of Olympia said, hey, we are already doing this in our berths. We'll take that responsibility on for the areas that we're already responsible for. And, you know, we talked with the Corps, so. And you know, we talked with the core. So you know, we'll, we will coordinate with the core on those pieces. So that is uh, currently what is reflected in the M O U, um, the division of responsibilities across the entities. Uh, you'll see there that Thurston County and Lot um, did not uh, weren't, weren't assigned anything. And um. And so that's where we've landed here. I'll pause again before we move on to the details of the dredge. Yeah.
On uh. This doesn't have anything to do with finance. It looks like you've got that covered. What about like during, I don't know, I'm gonna call it king tide season. You got a heavy snowfall, hard rain, all that kind of stuff. And you got a lot of water coming down river. Normally, you know, if a river gets a log blocked across, it'll just cut another channel. Well, it won't have that to work with here. So will you be putting riprap in? Maybe on the sides of the channel that is going to be the final location of where the channel goes. So that we won't have washout problems or that type of thing. Is that part of the engineering thing? It's maybe beyond what you guys are doing.
No, that's exactly in the work that we're doing and we'll be able to better understand those areas of potential high scour. And uh, look at that within our habitat restoration design. So the plan is that yes, we will treat the shorelines and that treatment will change depending on where we're at. For example, in the north basin or that area that we all walk around. The eastern side of that is the Ark of Statehood. It's a concrete wall. So we know that armoring likely isn't needed there. We also know that the flow velocities um, change as they go throughout the basin. So there could be some areas of very gradual slope that it, that span over hundred and, hundred and fifty to two hundred feet. To slow that water down as it approaches the shoreline. So that's, that's what we're looking at now and that'll be part of our habitat design. Um, the last thing about the logs coming down the system, we'll look at whether there needs to be a debris rack so that we're uh, so that we're avoiding any infrastructure. Um, from passing those logs downstream. I see a side convo happening, so I just wanted to pause for that so that we um.
I was just asking for some historical context. I apologize.
Oh, no, no, I'm totally fine. I wanted to make sure I wasn't moving on in the presentation if you wanted to hang out for a little bit. Okay. Okay, great. Any other questions on governance structure?
No, but if I, I could, I just, I'm obsessing and I apologize. I have not been a party to this project for a long time of, of, at all.
Don't apologize. This is the point of the meeting.
And that is, I'm looking at the illustrations and granted, they're just renderings at this point in time. So there's not a level of detail. But I can't help but seeing that the Deschutes Parkway is, is covered. Um, so what is the plan for the, the roadway on the?
Yes, you know, that is uh, we, we should fix the clarity of that image. The plan is for Deschutes Parkway from basically the Fifth Ave corridor south to stay exactly as it is. The only change to Deschutes Parkway will be the introduction of a new roundabout and reconfiguration. So that this roundabout on fifth connects up to the roundabout on fourth.
Thank you.
Could, could I ask one question? I don't, I don't see you beyond page eight. Uh, it's still like.
Oh, we're not there yet. How, what, could we get through the next slides and then we'll get to that question?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Let us give you um, a little bit of background because then we'll get into the costs on page eight and I'm sure that's why what the slide we're all most interested in. So, so the moral of Sarah's story was that when we parse out the constructed assets. To all of the entities that the only thing left to manage is sediment. And that is what we are talking about when we talk about the memorandum of understanding for long-term funding. The governance is what we just described. The funding piece is from managing that sediment. So um, how do we figure out what sort of funding we need? And that's what this slide is. And then we'll talk about the allocation on the next slide. So when we talk about sediment specifically, the first thing that we did to understand um, our sediment. Concern or the lay of the land was to meet with the marinas and the port of Olympia to understand from them. At what point do you consider your operations to be significantly affected by sediment deposition? What the marinas said was that when ten percent of their slips are impacted because of shoaling. Or because of sediment accumulation, they consider that to be a significant impact. What the port of Olympia said is that if vessels have to wait more than four hours, a fully loaded vessel, which has a deeper draft. Has to wait more than four hours to get into a port vessel berth, big, to let the tide come up. So there's enough water. That they consider that a significant impact. So we took those two data points and then we looked at how sediment would change as a result of the estuary. So on the left-hand side of the screen here, what you see is sediment deposition under the no-action alternative. And areas of red, darker red are areas of greater deposition and the blue, the cool colors are areas of erosion. The next uh, figure over is a snapshot from the modeling that shows the sediment deposition. Under the estuary alternative. And what you can see is that when the Fifth Avenue Dam is removed. That sediment deposition will increase at the marinas and at the port. And so once we understood those deposition rates, we then looked at how quickly would that sediment um, accumulate. Before it hits those significant thresholds that I just described, the ten percent of vessel slips are the four hours of waiting. And what we found is that on average, at about every six years, the, the Olympia Yacht Club, which is shown here in green. Would need to be dredged. And every twelve years, the other marinas and the port vessel berths would need to be dredged. And at, at an eighteen-year frequency, the kind of through fair would need to be dredged. Now, we know that sediment doesn't come downstream on an exact um, consistent rate every year. It varies. Years of high flow means more sediment are pushed down the system or um, seasons of low flow, less sediment. So the way that we would monitor for the, those significant thresholds is that we'd have an annual bathymetric survey. And that would show us how much sediment is depositing in those areas of navigation. So once we did the modeling and determined how much, um, how frequently we would need to dredge to stay below those thresholds. Then we costed the dredging. And we used some, we used our team of experts that dredge throughout the Puget Sound to come up with uh, dredge estimates. To complete that dredging on the cycle that I just, that I just outlined. So now I'll go to the next slide and talk about.
There you go, Tessa.
Oh, sure.
Uh, on the left side. The part of downtown Olympia that's covered in white, what does that mean? What does that mean? Why is it white?
Uh, we were. You know, actually, I don't know why it is white, but it um, it's generally saying that there's no deposition or erosion there. I, it's probably just shouldn't have been picked up in the model. Um, oh, actually, no, the reason why it's not picked up in the model, I'm sorry, I retract everything I just said. Is because this is a snapshot from set, from sediment deposition, from sediment transport. The model also looks at hydrodynamics, which is water elevation. And so what this showed to us by including this in the grid for the model is that when we're looking at flooding. How far does that flooding go into and across downtown Olympia? And so that's why it's showing a zero here because it's not being eroded or deposited. But when we look at it on the water side of the, of life, we actually do see different coloring here. And that gets back to what I said about having lower flooding elevations. We, we know that, we know that from the same modeling.
Can I do a follow-up on that? Uh, so. When they dredge. Depending on the schedule. What about the, where's the tailings? I thought I saw something in your material that was gonna cover up some kind of contaminated material or something like that.
Great question. Yes, great question. Okay. So um, on the right side of the screen, all of the colored polygons are the areas that would be dredged in the scheme that we are proposing. And so what that means is that the rest of West Bay would not be dredged. Because these, the, this part of West Bay doesn't, is not needed for navigation. So under um, the planning efforts that are being led by the port, for example. If they saw that there was low levels of sediment contamination over here, they have to, they have to remediate that. One option would be for them to go dredge that. Another option would be, and this is, this is commonly referred to as natural recovery. Or monitored natural recovery, which is where you have a sediment source upstream coming and depositing over those areas of low contamination. And ultimately um, covering and ca- and capping that um, exposure pathway from that contamination. So they could potentially not dredge this west side of West Bay.
Move, move your cursor around a little bit. I can't see your arrow there.
Here, basically everything that's not covered in West Bay.
Okay.
And so we have initiated technical coordination with the port right now. And that's why when we talked in a broader sense about the importance of the port cleanup and the estuary restoration being designed together. Because we want to evaluate these efficiencies in our design. For example, if it would be helpful for our sediment in the future to be directed this way, we should know that now. And be able to, one, design for that and to estimate that for the ports so that they can bring that back to the Department of Ecology.
Is there, uh, is there any point where some of that material would be removed completely and? I don't know, hauled away? Raised the level of the port property or?
The material that will be removed completely is all the dredging that'll occur in the navigational areas. Because we want to keep those deeps for, deep for boats. What we, what our assumption is though, is that that material, when it is dredged in the future. Can be disposed of in water. And that isn't a very important assumption because the disposal in water reduces costs. Compared to taking it upland and disposing of it upland by orders of magnitude.
What do all the little critters think about that?
They like to stay in the water.
Oh, they do. Okay, good.
I remember when we were discussing this, the, you got, and you had done some kind of analysis that led you to believe. To the best of your ability today, that the, the level of the sediment would be of a character that could be legally. And safely disposed of in water.
Yes.
And I remember there being lots of footnotes on your, on your cost estimate saying, if this turns out to not be true and it's more, you know, contaminated. Or whatever than we think, then the cost will go up because we'll have to do the upland this.
That's exactly right. And so we have two key assumptions that we need to hold true. To carry forward the belief that this, the material dredge from navigational areas will go in water. Assumption number one is that the port-led cleanup will occur before the dam is removed. And everything that we have right now indicates that that sequencing is accurate. Right now, the port is projecting that their cleanup of contaminated sediment in West Bay will occur likely between about twenty-seven and twenty. Twenty-twenty-seven and twenty-twenty-nine and, or up to then, excuse me. And the, the soonest the dam could be removed is like twenty-thirty-three, let's say. So there's a couple of years afloat. The second thing, the second assumption that we know and hold true is that sediment quality in Capital Lake is generally good. And we know that by the sediment sampling that we did as part of the environmental impact statement. So then, once that sediment moves downstream, that's the sediment that we're dredging out of these navigational areas. And so we know it is good quality and, and is um, we're able to dispose of it in water. Okay, so let's go to cost. Let me walk you through this table. There's a lot here. There's a lot to say. But one of the um, things that Commissioner Mensah just teed up for us is that this assumes that the. Uh, material that is dredged would go in water. And though, we also estimated this um, eh, we also, when we estimated. The dredging costs, the estimates come out uh, using or, on a range. And we selected the high end of the range for in-water disposal. So we were conservative in our thinking by taking that high-end number. And the numbers that are shown here are in twenty-twenty-two dollars. They have not been escalated since then. So now I'm gonna walk you through each um, column. So the first column, it are the entities that are part of the funding and governance work group. The second column here is the percentage allocation for funding of the dredging that is needed. For the increased sediment. Now, that's a really important point because right in this column, we are only talking about the increased sediment. You remember on the last slide, it shows that sediment does move through the dam under existing conditions. This funding and governance work group would be focusing on that increase, the change after the dam is removed. And what you see here in the allocation is that all of the entities, Lot, Port, Tom Water. Thurston County and the state would provide an equal funding contribution for that dredging of increased sediment. The city of Olympia would take fifty percent or contribute fifty percent more than the other entities. The Squawks and Island Tribe would not contribute to the deal um, because of principles of equi- equity. And then the marinas would focus their contribution on dredging consistent with the no-action or consistent with existing conditions. So once again here, the Thurston County contribution is consistent with all of the other contributors except for Olympia pays fifty percent more than you guys. And the Squawks and Island Tribe is not contributing financially. This next column is the cost for maintenance dredging equivalent to the no-action alternative. So that's to say, in the future, when we dip that bucket in and we take uh, we take all of the dredge material out. Some of that would have already come through had the dam been in place. And what we want to do is distribute those costs to the entities that otherwise would have had to dredge. In a situation where the dam remained. We don't want them to all of a sudden be off of the table. Given that they had an operational line item for dredging in their current um, scheme and allocation right now. And so the marina.
Can I ask you one thing there? Uh, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Why would, why would the county be putting three million dollars? And is that an annual dollar amount or is that every six years or twelve years or whenever the dredging takes place?
That's total. And when you equalize it from when you start to when you're done, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on average.
I, I guess that sounds like I'm being selfish because the state looks like they're putting in two hundred and fifty million or something.
And let me bring you to the end here where you see that they have actually a two hundred and fifty million dollar contribution. And I, I will, I will get there. Let me, let me do that. Let me, maybe I need to speed up. Um, but what we wanted to show here in this column that my mouse is on is that there are continued contributions from the marinas and the port. Consistent with no action. They don't, they still have skin in the game here. And then what we do is we look at what would the total contribution be for each entity? For dredging of that increased sediment. And you, the natural question will be, how did you get to this dollar amount at the bottom? What we did is we took the dredging cost estimate. And then we looked at how many dredge events would happen from the time the dam was removed. To the end of this agreement, which is twenty-fifty. That's eighteen years. And what I said earlier was that we have dredging at an approximately six-year frequency. So that's three dredge cycles. So we estimated the um, dredging for three dredge cycles. And then we allocated that proportionately consistent with the allocation percentages here. And what that gets to is two-point-eight million for Thurston County. But what the M O U says is that when the, each entity would begin providing an annual payment. Once the state has secured funding for construction, because that would give you certainty that the project was gonna move forward. We don't want anybody, or that we, payments would begin at that point. If you take it from that point through twenty-fifty and you average that out, that two-point-eight million dollars becomes. Uh, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for each entity to contribute to long-term maintenance of the project. As I mentioned on the last slide, or we mentioned before, Thurston County doesn't have any governance responsibility or soft cost. Oh, and I'm related to that. The next.
And so it's for, just to clarify, so from the state perspective, not only are we taking care of the full construction of uh, removing the dam. Restoring the estuary, we would also take on sediment cost proportionally with the other folks in the funding and governance. And in addition to that, we would also have uh, other responsibilities like um, manning the uh, decontamination station. Uh, decontamination station for an basis. So the state has still a massive role in this and takes on the entirety of the construction cost. Just to get back to your point on what's the state paying for.
Can I ask a question? And these cost estimates is um. You know, when you dredge, you have to do something with whatever is dredged up there. And I know that sometimes there is environmental sensitivities to it. Are these costs that, that is? Do these cost estimates include that additional environmental protections where that material is going to go? Or is that going to just be an additional cost that jurisdictions are going to have to figure out later on?
Great question. These costs represent what would be needed to dredge and handle the material for disposal in water. So it's dredging and getting it into its final resting place without an assumption of additional, there are no assumed additional costs on top of this. So this is a, our best representation right now. Now it's important for us to say that these. Our certainty of design will increase as our design progresses, but this is a good, accurate representation for the information we have right now.
Mr. Fournier.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, and I'm totally new to this conversation at this table. So I want to preface with that, but uh. I, I'd like to hear, like, I, I see the cost allocation and it makes sense for me, Olympia, the port. Um, the state, but I, I'd like to hear an argument for why Thurston County. Is responsible for any of this cost. I, I, I just, I, I need to know that justification because, you know, we maintain roads, we maintain the lakes. But I don't know that this lake is one that we're responsible for. But so what is the justification for Thurston County? Uh, covering some of these costs. What's the argument for that?
Sarah, do you wanna?
Yeah. So that goes back to that um, slide that we talked about with the shared benefits. Um, and a recognition that in Thurston County is the. Um, it was the region that we looked at in the EIS from a, from an economic perspective. Um, the residents of Thurston County, um, those living, let's just say, living outside of Olympia and Tom Water. Otherwise represented by the, the jurisdictions. There um, still have a connection to this economic region and may um. Will enjoy and benefit from the um, the improvements. That this project will bring in the form of quality of life. And the maintenance of those existing streams of revenue through spending um. And, and other things. So uh, Thurston County um. Does benefit by way of its connection to the regional economy that would also benefit from. The um, implementation of this project. So. That was, I think, the key um, take home from that discussion here. That the group had.
Can I add to that?
I, I'm, yeah, I'm just like, how do I sell that to a resident in Yelm?
Okay.
I mean, it's hard.
And. Sorry, I. Commissioner, did you wanna?
Well, I just wanted to add to it, you know, um, you can also view it as a board of health issue, right? As well when it comes to um.
Yeah, foundational public health.
I will be making an argument for that later on, but um, you know, as, as we're looking at, how do we, how do we make this work? But um, I, I, you can also look at it from, you know, um. A water protection and water um. Eh, environmentally safe water and how it's affecting kind of that whole area. It's not only affecting uh. You know, the city of Olympia, but it goes, you know, up into. Uh, mine and Commissioner Mansour's district, right?
Like, we're partners in Lot, uh, Wayne, and so like. I'm a Lot rate payer, even though I live in the county, because I'm in an urban growth area and I'm on sewer. And so we have constituents who. Uh, just from an economic standpoint, uh, would be, would benefit from the regulatory issues that Tesla laid out regarding Lots. Role in this if, and, and Lots ability to increase capacity is key to this region's ability to e- economically develop and grow. Because if we can't handle the wastewater, um, you know, in our, we, we can't, we can't grow consistent with the Growth Management Act and. And sort of support the economy of this county. That was some of the things that came up in the discussions that I was part of.
Yeah. And again, restoring access to the water, you know, that will always be an option for anyone living in the region and beyond the region. But and for thinking about your constituents, uh, the opportunity to, to access the water and enjoy it in different ways. Or the businesses that would be connected to it in, in Olympia, even if they don't live in Olympia. There will. Preemptively, there will always be people who say, you know, I'm not, I, I don't care about the lake. I never go there. I'm far away. I don't pay into Lot. But when you think about public services, there will always be people who don't access, you know, the specific thing. And so we want to think about this broadly. About um, you know, the, the collective benefit that does trickle through um, and. Uh, affects the people living in Thurston County.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I think it's important to note too that we find there. We have built this off of the um, acknowledgement and recognition of shared benefit. But Thurston County will get questions throughout this process about. Isn't Thurston County contributing all of the sediment that we are collectively dredging? And that has been a big, important discussion topic that we've had to have with all of the other entities. When they have to think through and digest their contribution for dredging sediment that is sourced upstream. And so on every jurisdiction, there is, uh, you know, the flip side to that coin. And, and that's part of the reason where I think that Thurston County might be able to get to a position to see. That the, you are in a great position with the allocation, given the kind of pushback or response. That you might hear from the other funding and governance work group entities. And so I just want to say that since we're in this conversation, really focusing on the Thurston County angle. Um, and, and say that what we've been able to do is acknowledge that this is really a shared benefit for everybody within the region. And this is not about pointing the finger at where the sediment came from. So um, just adding to the conversation here. Okay. Any other questions on costs? I could just go through this in more detail, please. Yep.
One more question, right? So with. Um, the two point. Around two point nine million dollars, right? Is that something that we're going to be making a lump sum? Or is it going to be annual throughout the direction? So we're going to be signing like a hundred and twenty thousand dollar check for now until the end of the duration. Period of the project.
Through twenty fifty, an annual payment through twenty fifty, correct?
So it's like a lottery pay.
There's not possibly another way of doing that where the, the county budget's that hundred and twenty each year. Puts it into a dedicated fund specifically for that. So we earn interest on our funds. And then every six years, when the dredging happens, we make that payment.
Sarah, did you want to start with that?
So we.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, there's been, uh, we'll get to this um. In a, an upcoming slide, but one of the, one of the reasons why we um. Why the group ended up with the interlocal agreement structured the way that it did is it recognized that each jurisdiction has its own. Um. Way that it might want to uh, operationalize this. And so that gives you flexibility to design. The um, the contribution and the way you think about that, the way you raise the money um. I- in a way that works for you. And you may be doing it, you may do it differently than another entity. As long as it meets the ultimate um, contribution or obligation that, that you sign on to. So um. There is some flexibility in there without, remember the exact, I, I don't think that we wrote in there or that in current, the current MOU has an annual payment stipulation. Although um, you're, we'd have to double check that. And that's certainly something that um, for instance, I, I think that Lot has talked about a single contribution. Um, as a possibility. So I think there is some flexibility in that. And Dave, flag us if um, if you remember other ones. But I know the intent behind this was to uh, to recognize and provide that flexibility for different circumstances among the jurisdictions. For how you get um, you, you make the contribution.
How, how about the fees that the marinas are, I see the marinas are going to be about at six million? And. What does that do to their fee structure? Compared to today, I guess. Uh, have you analyzed that, how that pencils out? Or I guess citizens are renting stalls? Is that what you do? You rent?
Yep, you, you pay a monthly slip fee.
And so what would that change be to, for them to come up with that revenue? Uh, are they all private? I don't even know. Are they private?
They are. They are. The city of Olympia.
So they'll have to raise, they'll have to raise slip fees, I guess. How much would that entail? Uh, twenty five cents a month or twenty five dollars a month? What would it be?
For Olympia Yacht Club, it's about sixty dollars a month. And for the other marinas, it's about fourteen to twenty dollars a month.
And, and what is it now? I mean, what's, what's the difference of what people pay now compared to what they're going to have to pay?
Oh, sorry, I should have phrased my answer better. The difference would be in the future to generate this revenue. They would need to add between fifteen to twenty dollars at the other marinas or about sixty dollars per month. Addition to their current base cost at the Olympia Yacht Club.
And the base cost. The length of slip and a lot of other factors.
And has that been, she's trying to answer that. I'm sorry. Okay. I, did you say the slip cost was?
It depends on, eh, eh, the slip cost varies. Um, Tessa, do you have the, the kind of the base range it was significant?
I didn't, I don't have that handy, right? Oh, sorry, I don't have that.
Dollars. We're not talking about a doubling. Um, the, it was a small increment, the sixty dollars.
I'd like to assure the commissioners here that we are very engaged with our marinas and having regular conversations as we move to this next step. And that uh, they are definitely at the table during these conversations. So this isn't any news to them. And uh, just to be aware, all of the marinas are part of a conversation with us, so.
Uh, uh, the only reason I'm asking about that is that it seems like, okay, so the county, if we contribute three and Tom Water contributes three. And the port. Does three. I'm just trying to figure out that. Increase. Does that turn into such a problem for them that it in turn turns into litigation or? I mean, that's all been kind of figured out. Is that it?
I, I would go back to the answer that Dan just provided, that we're working with the marinas right now to um, develop an agreement with them. So the leading force here is the interlocal agreement to pay for the increased sediment. And then after that is signed, we'll be working with the marinas for what sort of agreement works best for those marinas. Although we're in meetings with them starting a couple of years ago consistently.
I mean, it kind of goes back to my comparison to the federal government in Benton County. I mean, so they're being asked to kind of take care of this problem that the state created. I, but I don't know if that's actually how it's going to be or not, but I can see somebody would be upset about something, I suppose. I'm just wondering how, how it's going. I haven't heard anything about it yet, so.
We all want to say something. Go ahead, Sarah. And I see Dave too.
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to emphasize, recognize that that five point eight million is the cost equivalent to the no action alternative. So those are presumably costs that would, they would already be paying or should be under the um, the, the rules set out for the. Um, the way that dredging works currently.
That's what I was going to ask. Why is it, why are you saying it's sixty dollars more if I thought they were only paying for what they would already have to pay for? So what, why isn't zero extra dollars?
It's a great question and there's two reasons for that. One is because with the new DNR leases, they have updated conditions. About minimum depth requirements that will um, change their, their current program relative to dredging. And so I guess we could, we could update our language to not say it's an additional sixty. It's just that this is what will be needed to maintain their, their current lease conditions. And so this is representative of, again, what would be needed under the no action. So this is what would be needed if we projected dredging without the project through twenty fifty. And we just want to represent that that is needed in addition to the increased costs when we think about costs overall. For dredging from dam removal to um, twenty fifty, the end of the agreement.
Let's blame DNR, not ourselves, if we can.
Exactly.
And, and there was, there were specific um, thresholds that triggered, triggered a dredge. And so in, in this, I don't know, Tess, if it's worth going into this a little bit, but um, the, eh, the way that. That, that we calculated that is based on particular thresholds. Looking that, that um, and this is looking forward, you know, looking backward, is this what they actually have been paying for dredging? That's a different question and, and that's specific to each individual marina's operations and decisions they make. But this was uh, um, estimated based on a set of decision rules that sort of are consistent across all of the dredge analyses.
Yeah. Someone had a question. I'll let them fire away with the question first.
Ms. Uh, I mean, can you, uh, or whoever, uh, can, can someone explain just the fundamentals of dredging? To just for the lay, for layperson out there and benefits uh, versus, I mean, i- is it a legal requirement? There's people that are completely against dredging. There's people that are for dredging. Can you give us like a snapshot of what that all means?
Okay, I start with that. Sure. Um, so hmm, snapshot of dredging. When we think about dredging across West Bay, it is important that we think about it in the most efficient terms. And the way that we do that is focus it in the areas that would be used by boats. Because we don't need all of West Bay to be dredged, for example. We just need the ability for these recreational marinas and the port to get out to the deeper waters of Bud Inlet. So all of the dredging right now is assumed to occur within these colored polygons. Now, the question is, do some people, are some people for it and are some people against it? There's a couple of different ways to answer that question. One is the regulatory agencies that have to issue the permits to, in order to dredge. And they want dredging to occur in those deeper areas and not in the more shallow areas. Because those shallow areas provide good habitat for aquatic species. So that's part of the reason why we focus the area in the deeper navigation. The dredging and the deeper navigational, but also because why would we dredge if somewhere we don't need to, that just adds cost? The other thing that people think about in terms of should we dredge or should we not dredge? Is that dredging is to support recreational and working use of the waterfront. And there are a number of, I would say, a majority of supporters that are interested in both restoring the estuary. But also maintaining that vibrant downtown Olympia waterfront and really part of the economic engine that we see down here. With all of these uses. And the way to do that is with dredging. And so I would say that that is a key driver and key kind of put in your bucket of supporters for why we would dredge those areas. So those boats can exist in the future. That help at all?
I think so.
Okay.
I, I'm going to just add, it's kind of more adding to the conversation. One's a little bit about the marinas that we had in discussions with the marinas. Uh, and Sarah kind of hinted on this, that this isn't always what they have done. Part of what they. You know, what we're trying to do in estimating costs is come up with models and triggers and, and being able to estimate. Estimate going forward. And the marinas basically said, yeah, that's all well and good, but in the past, we've kind of done it as we've needed to. Uh, yeah, a little bit more ad hoc. And so when, when it becomes formalized, this is when, when you re- meet these thresholds. Then you will dredge. That, that kind of solidifies the numbers and provides numbers we can work with. Uh, eh, another layer to put on this is kind of what are the, the legal requirements? And this goes back to. Um, kind of why would we do this and why do you dredge? And, and what is the state doing at its very, very base level? The state requirements as far as lawsuits and people forcing us, us, the, the state to do things, it would be to take out the dam. And then to kind of put things back into its natural state one time. No one has really legally, no one has the right for a dam to remain there in place for, for, in perpetuity. And so if the state removed the dam, did its initial habitat restoration and then said, okay, we're done. What would happen? Eh, eh, the, the sediment. what would happen? Uh, the the sediment would all, it would accumulate. The marinas would be unhappy. Uh, we might lose some of our economic engine. And so that was the stuff that, you know, we were dealing with and I was dealing with on on the writing side of things where Sarah talked about those benefits. You know, because that's where you move from things you had got to do. Well, there's kind of a minimal thing you have to do. It's that initial cost. But does anyone want it to stay like that? It would be bad for everybody. Um, so then let's look what's good for everybody. And that's where you get into those benefits, you know, benefit discussions of this is our economic engine for all of us. City, county, Tumwater, you know, state to a certain extent. So I main thing I wanted to throw in from the AAG perspective was kind of what would the the basic legal requirement look like? So, thanks.
Uh, I I appreciate this discussion and and I I appreciate the 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 economic argument. I appreciate the desire to have a vibrant waterfront. And and I and I would say we don't really have one right now. You know, it's not maintained. It is kind of a mess. There's a tremendous amount of unrealized potential that is down in that area. And and you know, some of these plans do help move some of those things forward. So I appreciate that. Uh, you had mentioned, somebody had mentioned earlier, like requirements, legal requirements to maintain navigable waterways. Can somebody speak to that? So like, there's some must dos with with the waterway management and the dredging?
Uh, I I think Tess, I know you can talk to this as well, but like the the port has the port has to keep its own channels at a certain depth. That's part of their operational requirements. Um, the marinas with their permits with DNR have certain requirements that they don't get to run a marina if they don't if if they don't uh keep depths at a certain at at a certain level. Part of it is uh DNR doesn't like you running boats over the bottom of the ocean for habitat reasons, not only for boat reasons. There's two sides of that columns or to to that coin. So yes, there are some fundamental reasons, legal reasons why you have to dredge. But from the dam ownership perspective, that was what I was just talking about a a minute ago. Those might not necessarily be state requirements. As a matter of fact, they wouldn't. The state requirements would kind of end once they got things back into a steady state.
But the state's committed to be at the table for taking care of some of this as well, so.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply.
Any other questions on the numbers? Okay. All right, so the numbers, as we said, are all driven by the sediment deposition that happens within navigational areas. And so part of the work that we'll be doing this year is to be looking at whether there are opportunities to minimize that deposition. And so we'll be, we initiated coordination with the marinas very recently to hear from them about opportunities to minimize deposition at the marinas. And we'll be, we will be modeling some of those options in the um coming year. And that modeling is expected to be complete, at least at a first pass by mid-year. And we'll provide a report out to the Funding and Governance Work Group at that time about how that's reduced the um level of deposition in the areas that we would dredge. And that's important to you all because that's how we estimate the amount of funding that is required in the future. So we'll keep you posted on that. We just wanted to let you know that the separate was underway.
Hey, I think I think we're on to me now. And if there aren't other questions about any of those other details, we have, we've arrived at the moment where we start talking about what comes next. Um, we're in the middle of all of these conversations right now, just to make sure that we've shown our work and explained how we've gotten to where we are with the MOU and that your questions are answered. What comes next is that we're moving that MOU into an interlocal agreement, which will be legally binding to be able to execute on all of the great plans that you just heard the rest of the team talking about. Um, the goal is to get the ILA executed by December twenty twenty four. Um, and I I just want to emphasize that that date is not an accident. I mean, partly it's legally required. There's a legislative mandate for that, but it's also um organized to help to make sure that we can show commitment to the project going into the twenty twenty five legislative session, specifically related to the construction component, so that it's clear that we've got the complete package worked out. It's also really important for grant applications to show that the partners are all on board. Um, and we know that grants are um would would it'd be lovely to have many grants be part of the funding for the construction costs. So we're aiming for twenty twenty four, um, December of twenty twenty four. That may seem very fast. Uh, but we feel like we've got a really solid foundation in the MOU and especially given the tremendous amount of work and thought that went into it from all of the partners around the table, um, just in the process of getting to the MOU. Um, our our expectation is that um we'll maintain the key assumptions that are included in the MOU that build from the shared goals and vision and the description of shared benefits. Um, and we're really trying to move into a place where the language is in legalese that everyone can review and um feel good about signing. Um, the advantage of having this next phase additionally is that if there are changes to the sediment control assumptions based on the work that Tess had just referenced, we can make sure that we can incorporate those in as well. Um, the coordination process that we're intending on using to get to an MO or an ILA that you all feel comfortable signing is similar to what we used with getting to the MOU. A series of one-on-one meetings um where we can hear the concerns and thoughts and specific needs of each entity um interspersed with group meetings where we can bring everyone together to try to solve any issues or challenges that might have arisen. And as we've said several times here, continuing to coordinate with the marinas is really important and we'll be continuing to do that throughout the process. Um, so we're hoping to hear some feedback from you all on whether you see challenges and opportunities um based on what you've heard so far as we're transitioning from the MOU into the ILA that you want to make sure that we are taking into consideration. And I'll pause and see if Dave, who's really the expert on all things legalese and ILA related, has anything to add to that narrative.
Not particularly. The, I mean, both the MOU and ILA is basically taking this presentation we've been giving to you and putting it on paper. Uh, with a lot of the same concepts, uh, the introduction for the ILA will be kind of like the MOU where it's uh almost a policy statement of why we're doing this and and the vision behind it. Um, and the MOU was full of language about this is our hope and intent. Uh, the ILA is starting to say, this is what we're going to do. We agree as follows. Uh, there are a couple places where we're still working on what exactly is that going to be? And um people raised one of the issues is how is the money going to be handled in the interim? You know, that is still, we're still figuring some of that out. We're quite, you know, we're pretty sure we've got some good paths to do it. And in the MOU, it was, hey, we're gonna figure that out. The ILA, over the next few months, it'll be, here's the plan. Uh, so I think, I don't know that I need to add a ton more right now. It's gonna be, look, it's gonna be loosely modeled after the lot agreements where there's a a base agreement and then some addendums and some some side, not side agreements really, but additional agreements like uh handing over specific assets, the bridge to City of Olympia. That'll be an exhibit. Um, so conceptually, I think that's, that's all I need to cover. If there are any specific uh questions, I'm happy to field them, but I think it'll be once you see the language and people start saying, you know, hey, I like that or I don't like that. We need this tweaked. That's where it'll come in.
Yeah, and just for folks' reference, we've already got our first uh group funding and governance uh meeting, I believe, set in March. And that's gonna be uh Commissioner Mensah, I believe you're on task for that with uh Jeff as well as the treasurer to participate in those meetings. And during that.
We switched it up, so if you can include me in those emails.
Absolutely.
No, that we're, hold on a second, but that's when you said that there were, you split them. That's probably, you you probably put me on funding governance and you took executive committee.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, that's fine.
We we switched them up, so.
Well, and we're not really doing it as a, it's a little bit of a hybrid. Uh, it's not so much as funding and governance where we have in a couple areas, like the city has a a primary and an alternate, and then we have like uh Rich who's coming in as the deputy. So uh we're not specifically targeting like an executive work group slash and then a separate funding and governance work group. So I think it makes a lot of sense to have an alternate. Um, we have that with a several of the municipalities, excuse me, municipalities as well. So so would it be both of you then?
Put us both and then we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
Excellent. I, that's super helpful.
How about, what it, what is the total dollar amount proposed to be for this project? So I I don't know, it says two hundred and seventy one million, but I I think that's just the mud part of it, isn't it?
We're estimating the project right now, but in the EIS, the estimate for the full project, all, everything I described on the first slide was between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty million dollars.
And that's inclusive of the bridge restoration?
How much?
But it was between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty million for every component of the project.
Is that the bridge, is that the bridge too?
Yes, correct. Yep.
So for building a bridge and doing all that work, huh?
Yes, that's right. And we're continuing to progress design and we'll be updating our cost estimates as we progress in the design process. So we'll sharp, be sharpening our pencils on that in the coming year and next year.
And I'll just remind everyone again that we still have inflation to deal with too. So don't anchor too hard on that number, but it's a really great starting place es estimate. I mean, it's, it is, um, it's had a lot of math in getting there.
Hybrid in the cap in the lake, the options were a lot more expensive than that.
Yes, they were.
Which was part of the calculus for where we got to.
So I kind of, I know we've got a little bit of time, but I want to bring us back to kind of an important question for us as we start to think about transitioning the MO to the ILA. And each different municipality has different ways that they move decisions through their leadership, their commissions, their boards. And we want to pose that question and and maybe um it it looks like we already have our primary points, but um what are the ways that we are are things that we need to be taking into consideration as we move that through? What is the timing? Um, are there certain milestones that we need to hit for uh decisions? Uh, just wanting to kind of open it up for that um kind of thinking.
When is the uh proposed draft of the ILA going to be? At a stage where the jurisdiction of the partners can actually review it with legal counsel, that's probably gonna be uh a main part of being able to figure out the timing on our end.
And and we're working towards having a first initial draft by March. Some of the components of it will be ironed out throughout the months preceding uh following. And one of the big things that we need to look at is the fiduciary responsibility. And right now, we're uh exploring an opportunity where we could have a more protected type uh account with the state that has a less likelihood for being swept by the state legislature, it'd be more of like a a trust with the state treasurer, so. But yeah, we're we're hoping to have some drafts in front of folks soon, but of course, those are gonna be ironed out throughout um the summer months. But just for example, if I think about the state and uh when we start to look at some of the things that we're up against for timeline, we need to have requests into the governor's office by September for budget requests. And so that's just one of the things that the state has. Are there things that we need to think about uh for Thurston or the other municipalities so that we can align our thinking to be uh most efficiently get to decision making?
So maybe I'll I'll ask a follow-up question to Anne's. I would say if our goal is to have all signatures completed by December, Commissioner Mensah, when would you need to have that in front of the larger commission for review and approval? Backing out from December.
I mean, you know, the, having gone through this process when we trying to get our MOU done, the county has tended to be more flexible than the cities because now with five commissioners, that's changing a little bit. We're got more folks to, you know, we put eyes on things, but we've always tended to operate from what I've seen, a little more. Because we have fewer in number, we can put things on the agenda quicker. We have a new board structure. I mean, i- it's always a couple of months, you see, it's usually pretty um practical to get something like that discussed and approved, like from the point of seeing it and discussing it and and providing feedback to it, to getting it onto an agenda and formally legislatively approved. You know, I think that's um, that's kind of just, I'm just throwing that out there as maybe a, an estimate, but you know, you're talking about, you know, September, October, I think we can operate within those timeframes.
I think the the, one of the biggest um outline factors, right, is if there's an initial draft, it's just how much effort does legal counsel put into reviewing the early draft, knowing it's going to change potentially substantially?
That's true. I mean, the two things that that hang things up are legal review and then, you know, a lot of times if there's a money issue right away, when then it's got to align with our budget process. But as I understand the way this is structured, we don't we don't have to make an immediate outlay of money. We make our first payment after a certain permit, whatever you said. So we don't have to necessarily be in perfect alignment with the budget process. That's good. But we do have, as Rob said, the legal review. That's kind of in turmoil here because our um longtime board attorney uh uh has is retiring. And so we've got a reshuffle of all the different um lawyers within the prosecuting attorney's office that give us advice on various matters. And I'm not sure who would be Travis. My, I think Travis has been the one. Travis is still with us, but he's got new responsibilities. So exactly who's lap, whose desk this would fall on, I don't know. And that's always a little bit of a, we have had projects in the past that have taken longer on legal review than than we were hoping. So that's a little bit out of our control as legislators.
Okay, that's, oh, am I missing something in the room?
Nope, I think that's, that's about all we can tell you. I mean, we have a new, we have a new county manager coming in 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 April. And so, you know, I think a lot of things and but by the fall, there may be different, different processes or different speed of things. Who knows? You know, we're, we're, we got a lot of change, but the new commissioners, um, and new executive leadership as well.
And I welcome the opportunity to have a briefing too with your, your new folks. So one, once he uh gets up to speed. That would be really good, yeah. Yeah, are there other folks we need to uh reach out to uh other points of contacts for the county that should be informed or included?
Somebody thinking, anyone?
Is that your treasurer? I got him on my list.
No, things about it.
Okay. Tessa, you're gonna say something?
I was just gonna ask Commissioner Manser, would it be helpful if we did a kind of midway through the process briefing uh to this group? Or would that information all flow through you and your, in your work sessions?
So again, since we've went through this once before with the MOU, I did my best to give the board kind of updates. We we have frequent points where we uh share information from other committees. So I do my best. I I mean, you guys do it a lot better than I do. I mean, Fisher Edwards always has a lot of questions as as you could see, and I would do my best to answer them, but it's really nice to have you guys here to be able to directly say, here's what the study showed, here's what we, here's what we looked at, here's what we didn't look at. Here's um those kind of details. And if you're not if you're not working on it on a monthly basis and you see this every six months, it it gets, it's very fuzzy for for the other commissioners that aren't the, aren't the actual assigned uh commissioner, like just to remember, what is it we're doing?
Yeah, I think we're committed to come back and uh do a briefing when we get to about the halfway point, just to make sure everybody's up to speed on the conversations that we're having. Because uh the cadence of it, I think, as Sarah mentioned, was that we're having more individual meetings and then then we have group meetings and we're coming back individual meetings and group. And so I think there's a natural cadence to then sit down with the larger group too. So we'd be more than happy to do that.
It looks like.
We've really appreciated all these questions.
It looks like according to your uh design schedule and milestones, that you're looking at a quarter, three, twenty four stakeholder touch engagement anyway.
That's right. Yes, absolutely. Though I think that um we have good flexibility in the funding and governance process to meet with this commission and all of the groups as needed to keep you up to speed.
I have a question. Um, so at what point, I see on the, on page ten, where you're talking about the MOU transition to the interlocal agreement and kind of in the middle there, it says group meetings open to public. where you're talking about the MOU transition to the interlocal agreement and kind of in the middle there, it says group meetings open to public. Um, I'm just wondering, like, at what point are we gonna open it up to public comment? Or like kind of share with the public what we're working on so that they don't feel like this is all happening behind closed doors? And then they find out when everything's signed and done. Have we already started that process?
Good question. Anne, do you want to speak to that or do you want me to?
Uh, it's when our public meetings or is that where you're gonna go to or?
Just all of the public.
Yes.
Okay.
It's gonna be a lot.
I think you're right, but the first thing that I would respond with is that all of the meetings of the funding and governance work group will be, uh, open to the public. And so, and to ensure that they see that and we're not, um, just making them open as a, as a point of jest. We are, um, providing that update to our newsletter, which is about five thousand to six thousand email, uh, addresses and providing the Zoom link to them and then posting that information on our website too. So we're getting, we're definitely getting the news out there. We also have convened a community. So that is making sure that this, uh, process is visible to the community. And the notes and agendas and materials will be posted on our project website that anybody can access. And then separately, the design process has several points of public opportunity or public input opportunity. The first is that we've convened a community sounding board, which is comprised of about, uh, twenty to twenty-five individuals that represent a range of, uh, interest groups or viewpoints that we are bringing together and meeting with at the periods of stakeholder engagement that I outlined, um, in twenty twenty-four in the design process so that we can hear from them and then bring their input into the design. And then there will be a larger public meeting later in the summer after we've got through the conceptual design. So we can share out about what we heard in that initial focused engagement and then hear from the broader community to bring that back in. The last point that I'll make is that we are pursuing actively grant funding opportunities. And there, there are earmarks for, uh, addition, additional funding for public outreach and engagement. So once we receive or secure that grant funding, we'll be able to increase the, um, the public engagement beyond what I just described.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. What is that funding? Um, how much is that funding? How much do you anticipate? And what's the date on that, um, grant that you've applied for?
We've applied for several different grants coming from NOAA and other sources. And we'll find out about them in the spring, summer timeframe. So they're all varying depending on the grant source.
Okay, that's awesome. I know like a lot of constituents are really interested in this. And there's so much going on in our county all the time for, you know, just the layperson who's working class out in the community. And they maybe really care about this, but they don't know what's happening. Um, so I think that outreach part is really important because I really admire all the different stakeholder groups that you've put together and you're doing your best to get as many voices at the table as you can. But there's always like people that we can't connect with for whatever reason. Um, so I don't know, maybe like posting stuff around the area, um, so that people kind of know like, hey, we're working on, big changes here in this area. If you want to tune into these Zoom meetings or watch us on YouTube or however you do that, um, that might be kind of cool, just so that people who enjoy the area now can tune in if they want to.
Definitely. Love that feedback. Um, one thing that's just coming to me that I should have thought to mention, and I will mention from now forward, is that we've got kiosks around the project area, the lake now, in present day. And they have a QR code and people can scan the QR code and it goes directly to the website. And then the website has all the information about our next meetings and our opportunities for engagement and to sign up for the newsletter and stuff. So, um, yeah, that's a, a good point about making sure we're signing the project area. We'll continue to do that and keep it updated.
That's awesome. Cool. Thank you.
Okay, is that cover what you guys needed to cover?
We are at the end of our presentation. Yes. I'm glad we had more than an hour today. It looks like we used most of it.
Yeah, that worked out good. So, and with the new commissioners and everybody kind of, I think could use a refresher. So, appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, please do let us know. Um, I'm sure Commissioner Mensah will be, um, be in touch soon. But when it makes the most sense to come back to the full commission and give a briefing. But I just really appreciate all your time today. Um, it's great to get everybody up to speed and we're excited to get back and do the work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
If there are no commissioner items, we can call this meeting to an end.
I actually have a commissioner item.
Okay, Commissioner Meehan.
Um, I know that, um, I would like to bring an issue up to the prosecutor, um, and being that we, we are on a new schedule that our meetings have been reduced, general meetings have been reduced to basically twice a month. Um, you know, just in observing how other bodies work, they always have an attorney present at their main meetings. Um, in the past, it was practiced that Elizabeth would join our main meetings, right? I'm not asking for every meeting, but our two PM meeting twice a month. I, I think it's just seeing that other jurisdictions always have an attorney present at their general meetings. Um, I think it's also, it's just, you know, even if something, you know, knowing that, Travis can't give us legal advice right there on the spot or anything, but it's something that I think it's just good practice. So I would like to make that request to Prosecutor Toonheim.
Sure, you have a second vote for that. Two straight hours isn't here. I, I mean, I'm, we heard commi, uh, we heard Toonheim's, uh, Prosecutor Toonheim's response. But I think, like you say, it's, we've reduced the number of, uh, meetings that would be necessary. So I don't see why we can't ask him. Any concern about that?
No, I think that's a good idea.
Mr. Corney, is that all right with you if we ask the prosecutor for that accommodation?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's valuable.
Okay. Should we ask, uh, Assistant County Manager? Or I mean, how do you want to do that?
Yeah.
I can reach out.
Either, either you or, or Rob, uh, whichever one. I just think just making that request, I.
Uh, I mean, I'm happy to, but it might be.
My guess is the.
Elected to elected, I think is probably.
Okay.
Stronger.
I'll send an email. And then I'm, you know, my guess is he may want to come discuss, you know, ins and outs of it with us and that's fine. We'll have that conversation. Okay, any other commissioner items?
I don't think so.
All right, Commissioner Edwards had to excuse himself for another meeting. So it's four nineteen and we'll adjourn.
Thank you.